Good evening. Welcome to this forum for the Stevens Point Area Public School District Board Candidates, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Wisconsin Stevens Point, the Portage County Business Council, the University of Wisconsin Stevens Pointers Vote Coalition, the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point Student Government Association, and the Stevens Point Area Senior High Student Senate. My name is Sue Buck, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters, and I will serve as moderator for this event. The League of Women Voters is a political, nonpartisan organization. The League's primary purpose is to encourage voting by registering voters, providing voter information, and advocating for voting rights. Tonight's event is part of providing voter information through candidates sharing their views of issues of concern to Stevens Point Area Public School District residents. The cosponsors of this forum, the SPAS Student Senate, the UWSP Student Government Association, the UWSP Pointers Vote Coalition, and the Portage County Business Council are also nonpartisan organizations with no endorsement of candidates or political parties. Their interest is in helping local citizens to be more informed voters. The Stevens Point Area Public School District covers over 400 square miles, once part of the Menominee Nation. It is one of Wisconsin's largest geographical districts. There are nine elementary schools and two junior high schools. The Charles F. Fernandez Center and the Stevens Point Area Senior High, SPAS, are the two senior high schools. The Point of Discovery School is a public charter school for grades seven to 12. There are six specialized programs: Early Childhood and 4K Programming, the Boston School Forest, Online Learning Center, Project Search, Rural Virtual Academy, and Summer School. For the 24-25 academic year, the student seat count was 6,907, and 534 classroom teachers for PK to 12th grade. Additionally, there are 459 staff in other roles, such as instructional aides, guidance counselors, librarians and library staff, district and school administrators, bus drivers, support staff, and other support services. The consolidated budget total revenues for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 for all district funds was $144,840,967. The total expenses for the consolidated budget for the same period were $145,726,697. The Stevens Point Area Public School District has nine school board members. Members are elected for a three-year term. Citizens of the Stevens Point Area Public School District, 18 years of age or older, may run for a board position. The board meets on the second Monday of the month. The school board members are compensated for this service at a rate of $3,780 annually. There are six candidates running for three open seats. The candidates are Jennifer Bushman, Miguel Campos, Jeremy LaBrick, Marnie Mercer, Barbara Portson, and Christina Smith. All candidates were invited to participate in this evening's forum. Joining us this evening are Jennifer Bushman, Miguel Campos, Jeremy LaBrick, Marnie Mercer, and Barbara Portson. Christina Smith has a work commitment out of the country and was not able to attend. To provide the most time to hear from the candidates and to provide a fair and equal opportunity to answer questions important to you and this community, I will review the format, time, and terms for this format, and this has also been reviewed with the candidates. Each candidate will first have a minute and a half to introduce themselves and make an opening statement. They will also have a minute and a half to respond to questions, and they will have a minute and a half to make a closing statement. And I will repeat a question if you need me to do so. Candidates will respond first to some questions submitted by the forum sponsors and then questions from the audience. Questions from the audience must be addressed to all the candidates. If you want to submit a question, please motion to one of the ushers. They're in the back, but if you motion, they'll come forward. One of the ushers for index cards and pencils. The League reserves the right to review and screen questions for relevance and to avoid duplication. Our timers are in front of the candidate tables. A green folder will be held up when their time starts. A yellow folder indicates 30 seconds remain, and the red folder means that time has expired. Candidates may finish their sentence, and then please stop so the next candidate may begin their response. Candidates are asked to keep their remarks germane to the questions and fair to the participants. Audience members are requested to respect the candidates' time and responses. They are also asking everybody to turn off their sound-making devices. The moderator reserves the right to interrupt to ensure that these ground rules are observed. The order of response to each question will be rotated. We will alternate which candidate answers the question first. The order of opening and closing statements will be chosen by random drawing of the candidates' names. As I've already stated, participants in tonight's forum are Barbara Portson, Marnie Mercer, Jeremy LaBrick, Miguel Campos, and Jennifer Bushman. And now we'll begin with a minute and a half opening statement from each candidate. And we will start with, this is high-tech.
Nice job. All right. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank the, oh, that's right. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank the League for hosting tonight's forum, and everyone here, both in person and online, for taking the time to be involved in our schools and our community. Strong schools create strong communities, and I'm honored to be here tonight to share my vision for the future of education in our district. For those who don't know me, my name is Miguel Gabriel Campos. I moved to Stevens Point in 2004 to attend UWSP, and have proudly called it home ever since. My wife, Kelsey, and I are raising two wonderful children. We're currently in our district schools and in the front row, which is why this work is so important to me, not just as a community member but as a parent. For the past 14 years, I've built a career in sales and underwriting at Berkshire Hathaway Specialty Insurance, while also running a small property rental business and working with multiple local startups here in the community. But beyond my professional work, I have always prioritized giving back to the community. I've served on the Grants Committee for the Community Foundation of Central Wisconsin, volunteered with organizations like Ignite Young Professionals, the Salvation Army, and Operation Bootstrap, and had incredible opportunity to serve on the school board nearly two years ago. That experience gave me deep insight into the challenges and opportunities within our school, and now I wish to continue that work. I'm running because I believe that every child deserves access to quality education, and that families should have a voice in the decisions impacting their students, and that our schools must be equipped to prepare our students for success in a rapidly changing world. I look forward to sharing my vision tonight, and more importantly, hearing from you, because together we can make a difference in the future of our schools. Thank you.
Jennifer Bushman.
Good evening, and thank you all for taking the time to attend tonight. My name is Jen Bushman, and I'm honored to be running for reelection to the Stevens Point School Board. I am the proud mother of three children in the district, two in the audience, and I have one in elementary, one attending junior high, and one attending SPAS. I have a deep personal investment in the success of our schools. Public education has always been personal to me. My mother immigrated to this country from Taichung, Taiwan at the age of 27, and she always emphasized the critical role of education. Her belief in the power of education has shaped my values and fuels my commitment to ensuring that every child in our district has access to the best possible learning experience. I currently serve as president on the school board and have led in this leadership capacity for the last two years. I hold a bachelor's degree in communication and a master's degree in speech communication. I'm also currently enrolled at the UW-Madison Professional Coach Program. Professionally, I am the staff vice president of Talent Management at a global Fortune 20 organization, where I lead teams in learning design and development, leadership development, and talent management. I've also served as president and held other leadership roles for 10 years in the Stevens Point Junior Women's Club, which demonstrates my longstanding commitment to the community. Since joining the board, I've led initiatives to strengthen board-community relations. I've advocated for teachers and staff, and I've supported expanded learning opportunities for students and families. I look forward to continuing this work and ensuring that our schools remain a place where every student, and teacher, and family can thrive.
Thank you. Marnie Mercer.
Hi. My name is Marnie Mercer, and I live in the town of Hull with my husband and four kids. My children also all attend or have attended elementary, middle, and high school in Stevens Point. I too want to start by thanking the League and other community organizations for providing this event tonight to help keep voters informed, and I look forward to telling you more about myself and my reasons for running for school board. I come to this election with a unique experience combination. I have a master's degree in English and a great passion for reading and writing. I served for 14 years as a police officer in DeKalb County, Georgia, which is the eastern part of the city of Atlanta, and for 11 of those years I was a detective and detective sergeant in the Special Victims Unit. I am skilled in child interviews and have a background in childhood trauma and the effect that it has on the behavior of students. And while it is an experience I hope never to have to call on, I have unfortunately had to respond to a school shooting. After I left policing, I joined a global manufacturing company and have worked in human resources for the past nine years. My role there includes recruiting and retention of talent, talent strategy, leadership development, and creating a culture of engagement and trust for all employees. I am running because I want to contribute to a district where every child feels safe and welcomed in their learning environment. I believe that the health of the community and the health of the school district are inseparable, and that the successful school systems are built through the cooperation of students, parents, staff, and the community.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Barb Portson, and I'm happy to be here tonight as candidate for the school board. The past nine years have given me the opportunity to learn much about running a district of this size. I'd like to continue that. I am married, a mother of two boys, and you might guess that they're not in kindergarten. I have five grandchildren, all grown. They've all been in point schools at one time or another. My son's graduated from SPAS, and my, two of my grandsons have graduated, or will graduate in a couple months, from SPAS. I was a teacher for 33 years, both at the secondary and post-secondary level. I spend a good deal of time with children. I volunteer with Playhouse Theater Group. Maurice is in the back from Beauty and the Beast this last weekend. I know what it's like to be in a classroom with students of varying disabilities or abilities. It's tough, and COVID made it tougher. I didn't have to deal with the behaviors that teachers have to deal with today. For that, I'm thankful. We are in a dangerous situation right now. Teachers are leaving the profession in droves. I'd like to make sure teachers feel supported, families are involved, and kids can thrive.
Thank you. And last but not least, Jeremy LaBrick.
Hello. My name is Jeremy LaBrick. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity, and all of you here, including the candidates. This is a shining example of democracy, and I'm proud to be a part of it. I made the decision to run for office after careful consideration. I believe it is important to serve our community. My roots here are deep. I was born in Stevens Point. The first day of my education was at Plover Whiting. The last day of my education was at UWSP. My grandparents farmed the marsh south of Plover. My grandpa served on boards in both St. Bron's and the Village of Plover. My mom served on nonprofit boards and elected bodies. My adult life has been spent helping others and also the environment, from helping on the restoration work of Moses Creek and with the WCC to teaching English to children of all ages around the globe. I am proud of knowing I have made a positive difference. I hope to continue this type of service and dedicated work on school board to build opportunity for all learners, to support teachers, and to listen to our community members. Thank you.
Thank you all. And so we will begin with our first question, and we're going to go alphabetically and then to start off, and then we'll do a round robin. So we'll start with Jennifer Bushman. And the first question is, what is your position on the current state private school choice program which uses taxpayer funds for vouchers to support private schools?
Thank you. This is a question that continues to come up every time there's a school board election, and really it's a complex one, and ultimately it's a matter for legislators to decide. As a school board, our responsibility is to ensure that our district's public schools provide a really high-quality education, that it serves every student in the district, and regardless of broader policy debates and what someone might think about this topic, it's not the school board's jurisdiction. It's not something that we have jurisdiction over. And so our focus is to ensure that we have strong, well-funded public schools and serving the needs of our students and community. Thank you.
Miguel Campos.
Thank you. I guess I'd have to echo what Jen said there as well. I remember this question from last year. I'm glad it came up a second time because I went over that video again. But I would agree. I mean, my fundamental piece on this is that we don't have any control of this. I do think there needs to be transparency in the funds and how that comes out of people's taxes, absolutely. I think transparency is extremely important when it comes to any finances, but I don't have anything else to say in that regard. We don't have a lot of control over that at this time.
Thank you. Jeremy LaBrick.
I oppose these programs and expansion of it. I think that using tax dollars to support private schools is inappropriate. It leaves public schools struggling and left to ask voters for more tax dollars. Public schools will hand off about $3.3 million to the private sector this year. This seems ridiculous to me. This number is increasing every year, and that's where I stand on this.
Thank you. Marnie Mercer.
So this is a school choice question, and I want to ground us a little bit in school choice options in Wisconsin first. Wisconsin is obligated by its constitution to provide free schooling for all students. And open enrollment is one avenue of school choice within our public school systems. In addition to that, we have charter schools, or schools that are created through charters with the local school board. PODS is an example of a charter school that provides alternative methods of education for students who need that. And then lastly, you have private schools, which include fully funded private schools and the voucher programs that we're talking about today. Important considerations when it comes down to school choice and what we advocate for. I do agree with Miguel. Transparency is important. The state provides us with a specific funding cap that we get. Then they provide us with the amount of aid that we get, and we have to levy the difference. Then on top of that, we have to levy an additional $3 million to $3.5 million in order to fund voucher programs within our state or within our district. Because that levy is not separated out in taxes, residents don't have transparency into what they're paying towards voucher schools. And I think that bottom line, if we are going to be spending that on voucher schools in our school district, at the very least, people deserve that transparency. I do think there are other arguments to be made about the efficacy of those schools, but I also agree that that is not the part of school board members.
Thank you. And finally, Barbara Portson.
This has come up several times over the last nine years. I am not a fan of the voucher program. Our constitution guarantees us a free and public education, and that's where I'd like to see it go. I don't have any problem with private schools. I taught at one for four years, and I had a blast there. But I think that if we are spending that money, if the private schools are getting that money, then they ought to be handling and doing the same standards that we have to abide by, and right now they do not have to do that.
Thank you. And we'll start with the second question with Miguel Campos. And in your view, what are three things that the Stevens Point School District is doing right?
First of all, I think they've done a great job of transparency and really getting out into the community, making people aware of what they're doing and what they're working on. Having served on the board two years ago when we went through the referendum, they did an excellent job of getting out in the community. That was probably one of the largest gripes I kind of heard about prior to my having run for the Stevens Point School Board, was just seeing board members, seeing administration, having people out in the community to really understand what administration's doing, what are we spending money on. I think they've done an excellent job of doing that. I also think they've done a great job of addressing mental health. There have been multiple forums, there have been multiple conversations within schools, trainings. They spent a great deal of time on that. Mental health issues that our students face nowadays compared to things that I grew up with are entirely different. I'm not entirely familiar with all of them, but it's an entirely different environment. And we need to train teachers, we need to train administration on how to deal with these things because it's a whole different animal from when I was a kid, the type of mental health issues. There weren't a lot of mental health issues when I grew up. And last but not least, I think that they're doing a good job at working on teacher pay. That was one of the things that we did when I was on the school board, we were able to increase teacher pay, get EA assistance, which was a huge help to the teachers, and I think that's something that was talked about and a hot topic with teachers for a long time, and will continue to be a hot topic, and the school board as well as administration has done a good job at addressing that.
Thank you. Jeremy LaBrick.
Excuse me. Three things the school district is doing well. There's new curriculum with math and English. This is good and a step forward for everybody. We have great teachers. I know this from experience from my son and all of the staff at Jefferson Elementary So there, we are doing great. I'm sorry, I could have looked a little more into this, but caught me off guard. I'm human. The teachers' benefits, as I saw them, seemed like it was a really good benefit package. I do believe that. And that is all I have right now on that question. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Marnie Mercer.
In the time that I've been able to spend observing my kids and the community involvement in the Stevens Point Area Public School District, some things that I have been impressed by. The first was the referendum funding initiative from last year. So what impressed me about that initiative was the transparency. There was communication to the public. There was opportunities to provide feedback. There was explicitly spelled out what those funds were going to be used for, and in fact, we are using those funds in the way that they were intended, and that has been communicated as well. So that transparency in that referendum was impressive to me. Second, I think our schools do a fantastic job at career and college readiness. Now, I will say that we still have achievement gaps that need to be addressed within our school systems, but the programs that we have in place to help prepare children for a career or for college after they're done with their schooling career are fantastic. We have dual enrollment programs. We have an apprenticeship program. We have AP classes. We have a range of classes that is suitable for students of many different interests in the district. And the third thing that has impressed me in the Stevens Point Area School District has been the opportunities for parental involvement in the education of their students. That's not only the transparency of the funding, for example, but distinct opportunities offered by the district for parents to provide their feedback in the area of what is the experience of minority students, what is the experience of LGBTQ students, what is the experience of students who are homeless or suffering from other issues? And parents get to come together and share that information.
Thank you. Barb Portson.
I think that my three, top three things have all been mentioned already. I think we have terrific administration, a couple of them are here tonight, to deal with things like mental health and getting those counselors and psychologists into the school, making it a little bit easier for kids to get the help that they need. Addressing teacher pay and benefits. We're serious about that. We asked for money in a referendum, and that referendum passed. So we will be working on that very soon. And dealing with the achievement gap. Every meeting, we talk about what things have we done to help close up that gap for our students. But I think we're doing a pretty darn good job all around.
Thank you. Jen, Jennifer Bushman.
There are many things that I'm proud of and that I think that the Stevens Point School District does really well. And the top three things that come to mind is first, I think about the culture. Walk into any school building, I recently had the opportunity and was invited to read to a classroom full of first-grade students at Plover Whiting, and you could just see the curiosity and the engagement that they have with learning, and all the passion and the love of the staff and the teachers and the buildings and the leadership. And so culture is one of the really strong things that I think we do really well in the district, and that continues to be enhanced. The second thing is budget review and analysis. Upon being elected to school board three years ago, I can't believe it's been three years, one of the first things that I said to our superintendent was, can we look at software spend? And let's check utilization, and let's find ways that we can find savings if there's low utilization, and reallocate those dollars so that we can advocate for better teacher pay and staff pay, and we've done that. So budget review and analysis is something that we've also done really well. I've also advocated for a monthly review in terms of transparency at the board meeting, and that's something that has been instituted. The third thing is communication, and I would be remiss not to mention communication, given my passion and background in communication. We have a wonderful director of communications. I recently presented alongside her at the Wisconsin Association of School Board Convention, and the communication that we have in the district that is shared in the community and with families and students is really strong.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to start with Jeremy LaBrick this time. We hear on the news how students are struggling with mental health. How would you work as a school board member to support students, families, and staff in addressing mental health in our schools?
It's a very difficult topic, I guess, to take over. We need to make sure the needs of all our students are met however we can, and be sure that those students have what they need at home in some way or another. In regard to, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. We hear on the news how students are struggling with mental health. How would you work as a school board member to support students, families, and staff in addressing mental health in our schools?
I'm going to do everything within my power to make sure those families have what they need at their access. I don't know right now what exactly that is, but I'm willing to work with the board and learn and figure out what these things are that we need to do.
And then Marnie Mercer.
I think first the question is, why are schools responsible for providing mental health services in the first place? And that is what a lot of people ask me. In my work as a detective, it was my duty to read and respond to all reports of child abuse and neglect in the county that I served. When you work in that environment, like when you work in schools, you learn very quickly that not all children show up to school with the same background when they hit your classroom door. Some students come from loving, stable homes where education is advocated for. Some students don't have homes. Some students have food insecurity. Some have death or illness in the family, and some have trauma in their background or neglect and abuse. If we want to effectively meet our goal of preparing each student to be successful, we have to understand the needs of each student, and for many of them, that means plugging them into mental health resources. So what does this look like in the district? Like Barb mentioned earlier, it means we create a space for students to have in-school psychologist appointments for less disruption in their days. It means continuing some of the amazing partnerships that we have, like our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, who provide intervention and skill-building for struggling students. It means behavioral interventions when needed and IEPs when appropriate. It means addressing bullying effectively and encouraging appropriate behaviors, or as a teacher friend of mine likes to say to her students every day, "Make reasonably good choices." As a board member, I would encourage us to continue to provide those services that will allow kids to heal and thrive.
Thank you. Barbara Portson.
Thank you. Barbara Portson.
I think that the first thing we can do and should be doing, and I think we are already doing it, is to set strong policies. What is expected in our buildings from our students and from our staff, and then enforce those policies. That's not an easy thing to do. I don't want to be the one that says, you need to stop bullying this kid over here. I am passionate about the bullying issue. I have a special needs grandson who was bullied quite a bit during his 13 years in our district. I think teachers need professional development and how to deal with all the different behaviors. I know that when my grandson was attending Ben Franklin, there were many teachers who had no clue what to do with something called Smith-McGuinness syndrome. Nobody's ever heard of it. And I think another thing that we're doing is the crisis response. I mean, I didn't have to go through active shooter drills. We had fire drills. That was it. But I think we're doing a good job of preparing our students for terrible things.
Jennifer Bushman.
We know when students are struggling mentally that learning is not happening, or little learning is happening. And the school board does play a critical role in ensuring that all students have access to mental health resources. Schools are not a replacement for clinical mental health care, but they're often the first place that students' struggles are noticed. And so making sure that we have school-based support is essential. The school board has the responsibility to prioritize mental health and budgeting, and that's something that I have advocated for. Support partnerships, and that was mentioned recently, but working with local organizations and nonprofits and state agencies to continue the support that are burdened in our schools, to create a culture of well-being, and that's reducing the stigma of mental health challenges and supporting students and encouraging initiatives that do so, and to ensure safe and supportive schools, which means supporting policies that foster a safe learning environment, anti-bullying programs, ensuring that we're stringent with our anti-bullying in our buildings because that does impact mental health. Listening to students and parents and educators is also really critical, and that's part of our duty as a school board as it relates to mental health. You know, engaging with the community, understanding the evolving needs of our students. And you know, schools can't do it alone, but we must do our part to ensure that students have the resources that they need to succeed, both inside and outside of the classroom.
Thank you. Ann Miguel Campos.
First, I definitely think we need to spend time communicating with our staff and administration and teachers to understand what the mental health issues are. I'm aware of many of the bullying issues, the online issues with social media, et cetera. So I think understanding the root cause, what's actually, what's causing all of the mental health issues. I think we talk about this year, this all the time. A lot of this comes back to bullying and social media. So identifying the root cause and communication to determine, like, where is this happening? Is this happening in younger ages? Is this happening in junior high? Is this happening with a particular sect of schoolchildren at a particular age? Is their environment affecting this at home? Understanding that first is important because we need, that determines what the school is capable of doing. As Jen mentioned earlier, some of these things need to be addressed by professionals outside of the school. While I definitely think mental health definitely affects your ability to show up in school, it isn't the full responsibility of a school to take care of something like this all the time. So we need to identify it. We need good communication. We need training to identify these issues and then determine, you know, what the best solution is. Is this something that needs to be dealt with by teachers? Is this something that needs to be dealt with by administration? Or is this something that needs to be referred to, to an expert outside of the school because it's not within the scope of a school or an education facility?
Thank you. The next question is going to be a combination of three questions because they all had the same topic. So I'm going to try to meld them together here. Title IX is a federal law that protects people from sex discrimination in schools. These protections were recently expanded to include sexual orientation and gender identity protections. So can you speak about DEI and how you feel our students should be supported? And we start with Marnie Mercer.
Since the question started with Title IX, I'll note that recently the board adopted the Title IX recommendations issued by the new administration. They did this in accordance with advice of the school district attorney, Shayna Lewis. And in the same manner, they adopted the recommendations of the previous administration. With the frequency of Title IX changes over the past years, it has caused some understandable frustration. What hasn't changed, however, is the district's commitment to nondiscrimination, and I echo that. You can find that policy on the district website, and it notes that the board is committed to providing an equal educational opportunity for all students in the district. It goes on to list protected categories including race, color, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, and sex, including gender status, change of sex, or gender identity. These guidelines are in accordance with current legal guidance, which comes out of the decision from the Seventh Circuit, which governs Wisconsin. Further, our motto is that we prepare each child for success. Every child, every day. Not most children, not many children, every child. Now, can we guarantee success for every child? Of course not. But we can create an environment where children feel a sense of safety and belonging and have access to the resources necessary to have the best chance at success. We can develop engaged teachers who have direct daily contact with those children, most likely to have gaps in achievement. As a board member, I will continue to passionately support our nondiscrimination and DEI policies.
Thank you. Barbara Portson.
I would echo Marnie's thoughts on that. We have 7,000 students, pretty close, and every one of them is an important part of our system. Inclusion, equity, make sure that they have the resources that they need to be successful. I don't care what color they are. I don't care what their background is. I think we need to just teach empathy. We need to teach caring for human beings. And every one of those kids is important to us.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer Bushman.
I echo what many have already said. We recently did update our Title IX recommendations based on our attorney Shayna Lewis. And I do support our nondiscrimination policy. Regardless of what the administration is saying, or any administration is saying, there is beauty and diversity, and we recognize that, and we celebrate that. It is important that all students feel safe and that they feel belonging in the buildings, and that we teach them compassion and care. And that's all connected to the mental health and helping students thrive in the buildings. One of the things that we've recently implemented as a board is a curriculum called Character Strong, and that's something that does just what I speak to. And so absolutely, I'm supportive of our nondiscrimination policy and an advocate of that, too.
Okay, thank you. Miguel Campos.
I'm sorry, Sue. Can you repeat that question one more time for me?
Yes, I can. Title IX is a federal law that protects people from sex discrimination in schools. These protections were recently expanded to include sexual orientation and gender identity protections. Can you speak about DEI and how you feel our students should be supported?
Thanks. Yeah, I think everybody covered everything I would have said here. I just wanted to get clarification there and make sure no one missed anything. You covered everything. But yes, Title IX, I think in its current form, all schools should be nondiscriminatory, obviously. I don't think there's any teacher, any staff member, any person that is part of the district that believes otherwise. We create a great inclusive learning environment. All are welcome. As Marnie said, prepare each student to be successful. That happens in the classroom. I've never met a teacher that was ever looked at as a student beyond that of just who they were. They came there, they show up to learn, and that's what we're here to teach them. So I support the current Title IX, Title Nine, sorry, support the current Title IX. And yeah, I've got nothing else to say. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you. Jeremy LaBrook.
Yeah, I support Title IX. I would be opposed to anything against it. What could be wrong with anything that prohibits discrimination? I don't understand what would be wrong with this. So everyone is different. Everyone has different experiences, and those experiences are meaningful to them. And it doesn't matter who they are. My campaign slogan is opportunity for all. DEI is directly connected to this. And what I stand for, taking away DEI, not only excludes particular students, disadvantage is most vulnerable. Therefore, I'm opposed to removal of it. When we learn about our differences, it is beneficial to all of us. I know from experience, many people abroad in countries that are not so diverse, they will look at people with differences with interest and eagerness to learn. I would like to see more of this in our community and in our school systems because we can learn from our differences. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Next question, and we'll start with Barb Portson. And the
school budget is 45% of my real estate taxes. Your thoughts about the needs for future projects or major school funding needs? Any future referendums?
Well, I don't want to go through a referendum again on my term. That is a lot of work. I think the budget issue is a direct result of the legislature not funding us appropriately over the last few years. Prices have risen. Our teachers, our staff members are valuable people that deserve a good wage and good benefits. But we have to make sure that all of that money, the money that we do have, goes to the right places. We have to make some hard choices. Our administration has just gone through an evaluation of 48 programs to see where we can have some cost savings, and we'll be working on that issue within the next year. So I hope we don't have to have a referendum. We just had one a year ago, and we're working diligently on that. And we're watching very carefully to make sure that that money is being spent the way we said it was going to be spent.
Thank you. Jennifer Bushman.
In my professional life, I manage multimillion-dollar, complex budgets on a day-to-day, and I recognize the criticality of ensuring that we maximize every dollar that we have to spend. That is the mindset that I have carried as I've led on the school board, is how do we maximize the dollars that we have? And how do we ensure that we have data to support decisions that are fact-based and that will support our students, our staff, and our teachers? And so I'm an advocate of strategic spending. I believe in prioritizing dollars. One of the things that I did talk about when I first joined the school board is just doing an evaluation of our software. There was lots of different software that was being used in many different buildings that created different experiences for parents, not really equitable experiences. And so we looked at that. We found savings that we were able to carry over, and there's other ways that we can find the dollars. And we're doing that. We're doing that in a budget evaluation that we share monthly at the school board meeting. The administration does a really good job of showing transparency in terms of how we're making our decisions, what data we're learning, and how we're using that data to inform future decisions. And so I also, like Barb, hope to not have to work through another referendum. And I believe that the decisions and the steps that we're taking are putting us in a better position to not have to.
Thank you. Miguel Campos.
First, I think the legislature, they need to cut wasteful spending so that some of that money can be funneled down to local school districts. There's plenty of wasteful spending everywhere, on all levels, in all bureaucracies, probably in all countries. We're not immune to that. By any means, if they cut wasteful spending, I'm sure they can find stuff that was wasteful. The district did that during our referendum. So you put it under a microscope, I guarantee you'll find something. Legislature can do that, too. They need to prioritize. What are the most important things that make society successful, which make states successful, which make a government successful? Education. I mean, we need educated students. Educated students create businesses, they become effective employees, and then everybody benefits. So they need to go back and put their budget under a microscope, see what wasteful spending that they can get rid of, put it back over here, and then we'll do our job. I know our district did a great job of putting everything under the microscope, and I expect that they will continue to do that and do great things with that money. Thank you.
Jeremy LaBrook.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask for another repeat.
Sure.
The school budget is 45% of my real estate taxes. Your thoughts about needs for future projects or major school funding needs? Any future referendums?
You know, I'm going to have to admit, I'm new at this. I really, at this point, I don't know where that money's going to come from. I'm sorry.
Thank you. And Marnie.
There was a recently published survey in Wisconsin that demonstrated that most Wisconsin residents do not understand the school budgeting process. This isn't a surprise to me. I sit on the Business Services Committee. Thank you, Jen. I get a full accounting of the ledger monthly with Mike Kurtz, our finance manager, patiently walking us all through it. And I still don't fully understand the budget. But what I do know is data that we have from the state. The state of Wisconsin contributes over 5% less of its general fund to school districts than the national average and has failed to keep up with inflation in funding over the past 16 years. As a result, teacher salaries, when tied to inflation, are actually down 20%. We didn't have the only referendum in recent history. Last year, there were 241 referendums in the state of Wisconsin. That should be an indication that school boards don't have a great deal of control over the amount of money they get, and we don't. We depend on the state. But one of the jobs of school board members, as laid out, is advocacy. And I believe that we have a duty to advocate at the state level, whether that's through the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, whether that's directly with our representatives in the district, Minnie Maresi, Patrick Testan, bringing them into our schools, whether that's on our own behalf, going and testifying in public commentary, or whether that's communicating to the public so they are also armed with the data and understanding of how the state funds our school districts and can advocate similarly.
Thank you. And we'll start the next question with Jennifer Bushman. And the question is, what do you think is the biggest challenge facing the school board?
I think the biggest challenge facing many school boards, and I spoke to many school board members recently at the Wisconsin Association of School Board Convention in Milwaukee, is the inability for boards to work through varying perspectives and opinions. And that is a challenge. And when I joined the school board three years ago, that was a challenge. I ran through a very contentious election, and I joined a school board. What I can say is that we have turned the tide in terms of collaboration on the school board and appreciation for differing perspectives. And while that's a challenge, I do believe that leadership plays a vital role in that. And I am proud in my part of helping to solve the challenge of contentious school boards with differing and opposing opinions to a board that now can come together with collaboration and appreciation for the different perspectives because those different perspectives and that diversity represents our community.
Thank you. Miguel Campos.
Thank you. I actually agree with Jen there 100%, having been through similar situations, running for the school board in the past. You know, our society in general just has been extremely divided with the political atmosphere out there, in part just, I think, has a lot to do with social media, 24-hour news cycles, and everything on there, everybody takes at face value, doesn't read newspapers that are, you know, three, four pages long to give you really in-depth information. Marnie and I were just kind of talking about that earlier. And when you don't get that in-depth information... And when you don't get that in-depth information or you don't have the time to read that in-depth information because you're driving around and you shouldn't be on your phone, you don't really understand that after reading the headline and reading further into it, that actually, you may like this person, you may like that candidate. But the headline is what got you, the first two paragraphs that they know you're going to read because they've done research on it and that's all you're going to read. You don't read anything further than that. And so, it's created such a fiery environment for political candidates, for people at school, things that foster bullying, and that's unfortunate. From the school board perspective, I think that a lot of people, there's been a lot of, Jen hit it on the head, leadership. Somebody that was honest, somebody that was transparent, somebody that was willing to put themselves out there and speak to this, I think, is what turns the tide in these scenarios. You know, somebody that's willing to go out there and take the heat and be able to get in front of people and say, "Listen, we have a lot more in common than we think. We just need to get past these hot topics." Or actually have a deeper discussion to understand, "Okay, I understand your point now." And be willing to admit when you're wrong. I think that's huge.
Thank you. Jeremy LaBrook.
Yeah, I agree with both of you. Everyone has to, we have to see through our differences to get anything done. That's the only way anything ever does get done. I think big challenges coming up are going to be, where do we come up with money? Actually, the 3.5 million from the voucher programs and a potential 6 million going if we don't get our money from the federal government. This is going to be a very difficult thing to deal with if that did happen. That being said, we all do have to get along and figure out how this is all going to work out. And the number one thing is we have to do what's best for our students in our public schools and consider them number one and our teachers. If anything is taking away from the quality of their classroom atmosphere, we need to do something about it so that they can have the classes that they want, so that our teachers can build the classes they dreamt of when they were learning to be a teacher. And our students can be everything that they dream to be. That's it.
Thank you. Marnie Mercer.
I think this will not be a surprise to anyone, but I think one of the biggest challenges that remains for our district and for the board is addressing our test scores and the achievement gaps in those test scores. The overall report card for Stevens Point area Public School District last year was "Meet Expectations" and showed moderate improvement over the previous year, which was the lowest on record. That said, the district is lagging in growth. And the SPAS score for target group outcomes, for example, was only 41.3. Target group outcomes account for the achievements and growth of the lowest performing students. At the same time, the achievement gap in Wisconsin scores between white students and black students is the highest in the nation. And this is reflected some in our local data as well. The Department of Public Instruction provides ideas and resources for addressing achievement gaps. And one area that Stevens Point focuses particularly well in, that I have mentioned before, is in-family and community engagement. We have some remarkable options that I already mentioned. The Boys and Girls Club, YMCA providing before and after-school care that allows low-income families to work while they send their kids to schools, in-school psychology sessions, parental involvement sessions. As a board member, I would look to see how we can continue to use the fantastic programs that we have to target underperforming students. I would also look to see what other options and best practices we can take from the Department of Public Instruction or other agencies in order to continue to develop long-term strategies to address the gaps.
Thank you. Anne Barbara Portson.
As you can tell, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us. There's not just one. As a former teacher, I think our biggest challenge right now is keeping our teachers. The outrageously high percentage of people who leave teaching after just five or six years is amazing. A lot of states are making it much easier to become a teacher. You don't need a four-year education or whatever. During COVID, we highly respected our teachers. We found out what they do to help your children learn. And as soon as COVID kind of went away, it didn't go away, but lessened, all of a sudden, the teachers aren't getting the respect that they need and that they deserve. I think we need to work with them, give them some more help in the classroom, get them the competitive pay and benefits that they need, show them respect. The community needs to have a positive look about them. And I just don't see that as often as I would like.
Thank you all. This next question started to be touched on, so I'm going to ask it and maybe continue the discussion. "Schools everywhere are looking for ways to increase student achievement and decrease learning gaps. Please list two ways our district could work to accomplish this." And we'll start with Miguel.
Well, first of all, I think we need to, you know, Barb touched on that a couple of seconds ago, teacher retention. We need to be able to retain good teachers. We don't need to turn over our teachers every year, especially when we have really good teachers that are great in the classroom. I mean, I can remember a good portion of my teachers from when I was a youth because teachers, they loved teaching. They didn't do it as a job. They did it because it was something that they loved, no different than everybody up here. We're not getting paid a ton of money to do these types of jobs and it requires a lot of work, but we're doing it because, out of a commitment to the community, because of the love of our community, the love of our students, the love of our kids. And I think many, many, many teachers are like that. But when you take away, you know, take away benefits, you take away pay, you put them in classrooms where they have behavioral issues all day long, and in some situations, in some districts, not this one, maybe they don't have the support from administration that they need in order to defeat those situations. They don't feel supported. That's, people aren't going to do that. So, I mean, you can go to QuickTrip and not have to deal with any of that stuff. There's a lot of places hiring right now. So, I think we need to address, we need to address that. We need to address teacher retention in order to help keep great teachers in the classroom. The great teachers are priceless. I remember I had many of them. As far as the second thing, I mean, I think working with the state, the legislature, in order to get their money right, as we've mentioned multiple times tonight, we need and we are, we are making inroads. I know, I know, State of Wisconsin is making inroads with the legislature on both sides of the aisle to understand the importance of properly financing schools.
Thank you. Jeremy LaBrook.
Okay. I believe, like you all said, we need to keep our good teachers. We need to attract good teachers. We need to, we have new curriculum. We need to make sure our teachers are getting used to that new curriculum and have everything that they need to make their classes the way they need them. Because I believe they're going to need resources with all the new stuff that they have, as I heard in the meetings. We need to hold up our teachers as if they are the foundation of society because they are. And where I, I taught over, I taught abroad for 12 years in a country where teachers are treated like they are the foundation of society. And I don't see that here. And I don't know why not. But this is what we need to get through, is that we need to hold up our teachers so that they have pride in what they're doing every day and they have enthusiasm to do what they're going to do and grab our students' attention and drive them into a space where they are learning and enjoying what they're learning. This is how I believe, as of now, what we would need to do to close that gap. We need to grab those students, we need to grab their attention.
Thank you. Marnie Mercer.
Well, I addressed achievement gaps prematurely, I guess, in my last question. I will say everything that I said last time. But in addition, can we take a moment to appreciate how much even the people up here have dictated what teachers need to do in our community? The expectations that we have of teachers are phenomenal. And I will say, while I have not been a teacher, I have been in another type of public service position where everyone in the community knows how to do your job better than you do. And so, I have great empathy for that. Barb mentioned something important. Teacher resources are leaving the profession at a greater rate than ever before. In the state of Wisconsin, four in 10 teachers leave within the first six years of teaching. And yet, we know from decades of research that the single biggest impact on students and student achievement is the engagement, the positive engagement of a teacher. And it only takes one in that student's career to make that positive impact. So, absolutely, resourcing our teachers and supporting our teachers properly is the number one thing that we can do to address achievement gaps. The second thing that I would suggest, and it's something that I mentioned early as well, is continue our community and parental involvement opportunities for our students and parents. We are responsible for communication and collaboration with the community, with parents, with staff. And the more that we can talk about those problems together, the more we can address the gaps in achievement.
Thank you. Barb Portson.
I think we need to address behaviors. Behaviors are absolutely, making it absolutely impossible for teachers to teach. There are so many disruptions in the classroom that it's not fair to those kids who are there and really are interested in learning something. And I'm not sure how that is going to happen. I think parental involvement is a really important part of it. Maybe, you know, I was, am a parent. I didn't know what I was doing. And maybe we need to have some classes in how to deal with outbursts or whatever to help train people in how to deal with their anger and their frustration. I am not a fan of the way things currently go with, if there is a disruption in the classroom, the class leaves and the disruptive child remains in the room. I think that's backwards. I think we're making it more and more difficult for that teacher to do what he or she is being paid to do. And again, the teacher retention is important.
And Jennifer Bushman.
Addressing the achievement gap, it's first recognizing that there is an achievement gap. And I am proud that our board has really spent time investing and looking closely at the data alongside our administrative team. It's really a formula. If you think about it, it's focusing on the teachers and ensuring that we're supporting them, that they have resources and professional development, and that they have a positive work environment where that they can thrive. It's that we're providing them with ongoing training and mentorship and competitive compensation so they want to stay. In addition, it's the students. It's helping them learn and thrive in an environment that's safe and an environment that they feel belonging and an environment where they feel connection to students and to the educators in the district. And if they want to be there, they're learning and that is going to help us close the achievement gap. One of the ways, I should say. And then, lastly, it's families. You know, how are we having, fostering open lines of communication with our families and our classrooms and our educators? When our support systems are aligned and the communication channels are clear, it's a clearer path for us to get to that, closing that achievement gap. And you know, when we, when teachers feel valued, when students are supported, we know that everyone's more likely to succeed.
Thank you all. It's time now to move into the closing statements. And this is an opportunity for you all to comment on topics not covered in the questions. The order of closing statements will be chosen by random drawing once again. And each candidate will have a minute and a half to present a closing statement. So, we'll get started. Jennifer Bushman.
Well, first, I'd like to say thank you to my daughter, Avery, who's made me this good luck mom sign that she put in my folder. So, thank you, Avery. Serving on the school board has been an incredible honor. And I am deeply committed to continuing this important work. I am a proud mother with three children at the elementary, the junior high, and the high school level. And I'm currently the only board member with children attending our schools. So, I get to experience firsthand the policies, regardless of it being at elementary, junior high, or high school. I understand the hopes. I understand the challenges and the dreams that families have for their children. And I want students to have the opportunities and support and resources they need to succeed. My leadership experience, both in my professional career and on the board, where I was elected twice as president after one year of service, showcases my strong track record. I've worked to ensure strong schools, responsible budgeting, and a thriving learning environment. And I will continue to advocate for students. I will continue to support our educators and make decisions that will ultimately strengthen our students, our families, teachers and staff, and the community for years to come. I look forward to continue leading with curiosity and compassion and communication. This work matters to me, not just as a leader, but as a parent. And I would be honored to continue serving and ask for your support to reelect me, Jen Bushman, for school board.
Thank you. Jeremy LaBrook.
Okay. I acknowledge I don't have all the answers to the challenges and opportunities facing the school board. However, I have a strong work ethic driven by my personal values of respect, honesty, curiosity, and a deep desire to be a lifelong learner. I will use these characteristics to evaluate and make decisions as a school board member. As a kid, as a kid, I struggled with learning disorder, honestly. And it followed me to today. I know what it's like to want to learn, not know how. I know what it's like to feel ashamed of the inability to read and comprehend, especially when it's a budget, the budget that we have. But, okay, but I grew up in an era when adaptive learning strategies were limited. I think that's what drives my desire today to ensure we have opportunities for all students, every single one of them, regardless of their socioeconomic status, heritage, identity, or where they live. And I would be deeply honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Miguel Campos.
Well, thank you again to everyone for your time this evening. It was an honor serving on the school board two years ago. In that short time, we accomplished a lot for our teachers, our students, and community. But there's still more work to be done. Together, we increased teacher pay, expanded the number of EA assistants, identified budget savings, and ensured that voters had a say in key decisions through a referendum. As a new board, we learned, grew, and tackled important challenges together. But the future holds even greater opportunities for our district. If elected, I will continue working to help our district plan for the future and overcome obstacles, ensuring that we prioritize what's best for our students and educators. I will continue my advocacy for a comprehensive K-12 financial literacy curriculum, emphasize the importance of STEM education, and push for greater accountability in district spending, program effectiveness, and student support systems. Additionally, I'm committed to expanding trade-based learning opportunities at younger grade levels to better prepare students for a variety of career paths. I believe in the potential of our schools, our teachers, and our students. But ensuring their success requires strong leadership, thoughtful decision-making, and a commitment to continuous improvement. That's why I'm asking for your support. Thank you all for attending tonight, and I hope to earn your vote on April 1st.
Thank you. Marnie Mercer.
I mentioned at the beginning that I have a master's degree in English literature. So, one thing you will find out about me is that I like to find an appropriate quote for any given situation. So, I'll ask that you indulge me in that here. And I'll ask those of you who have heard this quote before to please forgive me. "In 'Man's Search for Meaning,' Viktor Frankl, a writer and philosopher who was imprisoned in a concentration camp in World War II, said that everything can be taken away from mankind but one thing, the freedom to choose one's attitude in any given set of circumstances." Many parents and teachers have expressed tremendous anxiety right now as they grapple with potentially foundational changes in policy, funding, and curriculum at both the federal and the state level, changes that are mostly out of the control of any person, whether they're a student, teacher, parent, or a board member. If elected, I will endeavor not only to act calmly and deliberately in the face of stress, but I will focus on those things that are most within our control. Do students have a safe and welcoming learning environment? Are we meeting the needs of our students? Are we improving our achievement gaps? Are we compensating our teachers and staff fairly in creating a culture of trust and support so they are prepared to engage in their most important work, influencing students? Separately, I will advocate for the funding and support the district needs from the state in order to continue to provide excellent public school education. Thank you for your time today, and I hope that I have earned your vote on April 1st.
And finally, Barbara Portson.
Again, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for being in. Thank you for being interested in our schools and who gets elected to the school board. I think my experience in education speaks for itself. Education's in my blood. I knew from the time I was in first grade, we didn't have, kindergarten wasn't invented yet. But I love everything about education. I love the acronyms. I mean, it's just a silly thing, but I'm here for the students, I'm here for the staff, and I'm here for the community. And I want to continue to do that. I'll listen, lead with integrity and transparency. Your support would mean a great deal to me. Please vote on April 1st.
And thank you to the candidates for the time and energy they have invested in running to serve on the Stevens Point area district school board and for participating in this forum. Feel free to talk with constituents in the lobby afterwards. If there are questions that some of you didn't get answered, I'm sure they'd be glad to visit with you. On the April 1st ballot, Portage County voters will also be voting for several other offices, including the Wisconsin Supreme Court, the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Court of Appeals Judge District 4, Stevens Point City Clerk, Stevens Point City Comptroller Treasurer, Stevens Point City Attorney, and the Stevens Point City Alders in Districts 1, 3, 5, 7, 11, and 9 and 11. Also on the ballot, there is one statewide ballot measure which will determine whether to add a voter photo ID requirement to the Wisconsin state constitution. The League of Women Voters of Wisconsin has a candidate guide, which may be found at vote411.org, and myvote.wi.gov also provides information about the April 11 elections and the voting process. League information about the statewide races are available at the league table out in the hall. So this concludes the forum for the Stevens Point Area School District Board candidates. Thank you, candidates and audience, for your participation and attention. We also want to thank Seth Hendricks and John Quirk of the City of Stevens Point who recorded the forum and will replay the forum on the Stevens Point YouTube site as well as the Local Access channel. Along with tonight's forum, the Stevens Point City Alders Forum for Districts 7 and 11 will also be aired, and that forum will be starting at 7:30. These broadcasts are an appreciated service to area citizens. Thank you to the league members, the Portage County Business Council, the UWSP Pointers Vote Coalition, the UWSP Student Government Association, and the members of the SPAS Student Senate who volunteered in various roles this evening to make the forum possible. We couldn't do it without all of them. Thank you to the staff of the Lincoln Center for their assistance and for the use of this room. The league believes that when you vote, you are participating in one of the most basic and important responsibilities you have as a citizen. When you vote, you are empowering your political voice. So please remember to vote on April 1st. Your vote does count. And now let us show our appreciation to our candidates and have a good evening.